We'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no gravity and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Councilmember Olson is absent this evening. And we also had an agenda that was presented in our packet. Is there any changes to the agendas presented? No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agendas presented?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Warren, seconded by Dave. Discussion. Called motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. For in favor and against. This time we have our minutes from our April 16th meeting, our regular meeting minutes, as well as our closed session minutes. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented?
Yeah, I think I got just one correction.
Okay.
We have, uh, under Unfinished Business, 8A, page 7, at the last line. Just wanted to verify, it says that there's going to be a sealed bid process available for approval on May 9th, which is Friday. I'm assuming that was tonight. It's just a, just a minor change there.
Can you go back, right?
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure we can.
Very good, thank you. Any other corrections to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes with that correction?
So moved.
Motion by Dave is our second.
Second.
Seconded by Warren. Discussion. Called motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. For in favor, none against. Moving on to our public open forum. This time is our open forum. Is there anybody here who wishes to address the council? Anybody wish to address the council for any reason? Third time. Seeing none, we will move right into our public hearings then this evening. We actually have three public hearings, so. Public hearing number one. I will close our regular meeting and I'll open up the public hearing number one. This is the public hearing before us this evening for vacation of portions of Elm Street North and Fourth Street North. It is our intent that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. If you wish to speak regarding this matter, please sign in on the sign up sheet at the back of the room and our procedures will be as follows. We have presentation by staff and city engineer followed by questions. We'll also have public input. Raise your hand. When recognized by myself, approach to podium and state your name and address for the record. State your comments and your position. No one will be allowed to speak a second time until everyone has had a chance to be heard. First, we'll hear questions for clarification. Second, we'll take public in favor of the proposal and third, we'll speak of against the proposal. After everyone who wishes to speak has had the opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed. After closure of the public hearing, the council will deliberate and take action as appropriate. Members of the audience do not participate in the council's discussion unless the majority of the council concedes to hear additional information or questions at that time. This hearing is now in session. Vicki?
Okay, at the, um, then this is the vacation request for a portion of Elm Street North and also Fourth Street North, and this is at the hospital. At the April 16th council meeting, the council accepted a petition requesting to vacate a portion of Fourth Street North and also one block segment of Elm Street North between Fourth and Fifth. The application was submitted by Centricare Health Systems Sock Center. The city is the fee owner and the lessor of the property and Centricare leases the property from the city. Notice was published and mailed notice was sent as required by law. I have item number one and item number two here on the portion of Fourth Street North. During the negotiations with Centricare and sometime earlier, there was a land survey conducted on the hospital and at that time there was noted that a portion of the nursing home overlaps onto the city right of way of Fourth Street North. The overlap varies along the length of the building from zero feet, it goes to six feet, and then by the nursing home entrance actually goes out the 12 feet to the sidewalk edge. The request is to vacate that segment, that 12-foot width along the back of the sidewalk, the length of the hospital of 384.88 feet. That would be anywhere from the edge of the sidewalk toward the building. There is no proposal to change the physical roadway or the parking that currently exists along that roadway. So that is the first part of the vacation hearing. The second part is Elm Street North, which locates between Fourth and Fifth. And this is as part of Centricare's proposal to reconfigure their parking lot and construct a helipad. They requested that the city vacate the current Elm Street North located between Fourth and Sixth. The property that is currently the street would continue to be accessed for the hospital, however, it may be reconfigured or altered as plans progress. A copy of the survey was provided for you. I also provided into your packet a sketch of a proposed location for the helipad and that pad's location is such that obstruction height requirements for landing and takeoffs can be met both to the west and to the south. This hearing is about the vacation of the right of way itself, it's not about the helipad, however, the proposed helipad is the reason for the request. And so tonight, as you conduct the public hearing, if you have any questions for me, the applicant and their representatives are here, so you may hear, ask questions of them as well, and they may have additional information they would like to add as part of their application.
All right. Is there any questions of staff? None? Okay. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in behalf of the hearing in regards to the vacation portions of Elm Street and Fourth Street? Go ahead.
Mayor, council, Vicki did say, mention that the helipad was one of the reasons that we would like to have that street vacated because we need to control the traffic along there. But in addition to that, if you look at your handout, there's another shaded portion and that would be an addition onto the clinic and the only direction that we can add onto that clinic would be moving back to the east, which in turn will eat up somewhere in the range of 40 to 45 parking spaces. And we really don't have any other place on our campus that we can add parking unless we take the street and vacate it and use it as best we can to improve that access and that flow for the public. So there's two reasons. I mean, the helipad is one and the addition onto the clinic, which will impact our current parking is the second one.
Okay, thank you. And for the record, you state your name and address, please.
Dell Christensen, I'm the administrator for Centricare Health and Sock Center and the property is located at 425 North Elm Street.
Thank you, Dell. Anybody have any questions for Dell in regards as the applicant, where he sits, Dell? No? Okay, thanks, Dell. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on behalf of this public hearing this evening? Either in favor, first? Anybody wish to speak in favor of the public hearing presented this evening? Third time, how about anybody wish to speak in opposition of the public hearing? Anybody in opposition? Anybody wish to speak at all about the public hearing?
I will say that I had, I did have visits from both of their, phone calls from both of the property owners on Fourth Street and once they were both made aware that we weren't planning on altering the parking plan along Fourth Street, they were okay with the proposal.
Okay. We have no written comments in regards to this public hearing?
No written comments.
Okay, we're, with that, if there are any questions of council before I close this public hearing?
Yeah, just one. If they're, we're gonna vacate Fourth Street, does that mean that they're gonna be responsible for snow removal on that street after that?
We're not proposing to vacate Fourth Street, it's just part of the right of way from the sidewalk to the building.
Oh, okay.
So the parking or the roadway will stay the same.
Okay.
I had a chance to look at this and visited with Vicki a little bit about the Elm Street vacate. We have always sometimes struggled vacating streets. It's just the way of, you know, we put the streets in for a particular reason, we have road and infrastructure. But I will tell you, I think in this particular case, in the campus and what we have up there, it certainly makes sense based on some of the recent acquisitions and things that you folks have done and what you want to do for the campus going forward. But I want to thank you for your, for providing us this information and we'll be taking action on this later this evening, but I just want you to know from my perspective, as we appreciate the continued effort to maximize the location that you have and the opportunities that present itself for the city, so thank you. With that, if there's no additional comments in regards to the vacation of portions of Elm Street and Fourth Street, I'll call for one last final time. Anybody wish to be heard on this? We'll close that public hearing. We'll open up our second public hearing this evening, which is the vacation of Road Right Of Way, First Street South. Again, it's our intent that everyone has had the opportunity to be heard. If you wish to, if you wish to speak regarding this matter, please sign in. I went through the whole process first time, so I'll just kind of quickly go through it. First, we'll have those that are in favor of this proposal and second, those that are against the proposal as we go through this same hearing process as we did the first time. Vicki?
Okay, this is the First Street South public hearing request for vacation. At the April 2nd meeting, the council set a public hearing for tonight to consider the request to vacate a portion of First Street South. This property proposed to be vacated is an extension of First Street Southeasternly of Birch Street. There is no physical road located there right now. It's on the plat that it is located. The property proposed extends along, to, through the building that you can see on the attached plat. The original plat shows a narrow street dedication. Later surveys show the property with and without the street, which indicates it may have been vacated sometime between the plat date of 1894 and present day. However, no such vacation has been recorded with Stearns County. In an effort to clean this up, this issue with the property owner, whose house currently sits on the proposed vacated street, a hearing was set so the council can receive public input to determine if the property is no longer needed for public purpose and can be formally vacated. I did provide you a copy of a certificate of survey, which shows the area to be vacated along with an outline of the existing home, which is attached. Now, the city is the owner of property directly to the north, identified as Lot 16, and our access would continue to be north of this house where it shows the vacated Birch Street. As of the present time, we have had no public comments received regarding this proposal. I believe the applicant is representative here tonight, if you have any questions of them as well.
Okay. Any questions of staff by council in regards to the vacation right of way on First Street South?
The one thing I wanted to add, on a typical vacation, the property would revert half to each side, property owner, and in this request, because of the location of the building, the request is that the dedication or the vacation be quit claimed to the property owner.
Okay. Very good. Any questions and clarification, what Vicki has just stated, understands that? All right. Anybody wish to speak in favor of the vacation of Right Of Way in regards to this particular public hearing? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to be heard? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Anybody wish to speak at all in this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing and we'll open up our third public hearing. These are going quite fast. All right. Again, same process as the first two, but this is the vacation of easement of Lot 2 Angle Addition, as was presented in your packet, and we'll use the same process as we did the first two times. Vicki?
Again, at the early April council meeting, the public hearing was set to consider the vacation of a utility easement that currently exists on either side of a property line of the original lots 1 and 2 of the Angle Addition. I did provide you a copy of the plat and that would be the easement in yellow that is on that plat that you provided. In 1989, the westerly 30 feet of that lot was split off with the intent that it be added to Lot 2. And at that time, a new easement was dedicated around, along the new line, which is depicted in green, however, no action was taken to remove the prior easement. The Sock Center Public Utility reviewed the request and has submitted a letter stating they are not using nor do they propose to use the easement and do not object to the vacation. And in addition to this approval, there will be a request for a lot later on the agenda, however, that's not part of this action. So really what this action does is removes the existing utility easement, but we're not proposing to replace it because the replacement was already done back in 1989.
Very good, thank you. And for clarification, as you stated, the utilities has responded and there's no problem with the vacate.
There are no, there are no utilities located within that easement.
Thank you. Council have any questions in regards to this public hearing?
No.
None? Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this public hearing? Tom?
Oh, you scared me. He does that to me.
Go ahead.
Tom, Mayor, from Hurdy Angel Drive in Sock Center. I'm here on behalf of Eleanor Engel, who's my client, and I think you guys have a grasp of what's going on here. I noticed that the, the certificate of survey that was prepared by Engel Meyer referred to the easement along the one line as a proposed easement, but Vicki has already explained that that easement already exists, so.
Right.
That isn't anything that we need to worry about and we're assuming the property split will go as planned, so obviously I'm in favor.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else wish to speak in favor of the vacation of easement? Anybody else wish to speak in opposition? Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, hearing none. We'll close our public hearings and we'll open our regular scheduled meeting. And we'll move right into our reports and presentations. 2014 audit presentation. Mary will present that to us. You have a handout as well. You guys got your handouts.
Yes, um, I presented a PowerPoint to the council. The first couple of slides that are in there were, um, with the mayor prior to it, so we're gonna be down to the majority part of it. But before we get into that, I'd just like to summarize briefly of what else is included in that packet and to give you some understanding. The city did have clean audit, meaning the financial statements are fairly stated, what the city council expects from here.
One material weakness, control over.
I was wondering.
So it goes into the TV thing. One material weakness, control over financial reporting, meaning the auditors take Vicki's trial balance, the city's trial balance, put it into a format that's in the financial statements, just mainly a disclosure that we have to disclose to the city council. Significant deficiency, slightly under material weakness, segregation of duties. Vicki has worked very hard to separate many of those duties, so it's not a material weakness, it's a significant deficiency, but there still aren't enough staff to separate out all accounting functions, so we do have to make the council aware of that. 25-page checklist we walked through for Minnesota LEO compliance and the city had no findings on that report, so that was good, good compliance there. Okay, so then we'll start on page nine of the PowerPoint that I gave the council. This is cash and investment balances as of the end of the year, and you can see each year, 13, 12, 11, 10, and 9. You can see the first one is general fund increased actually a little bit, and then all other governmental funds combined, you can see quite a significant increase there. If you remember right, last year, the city council took over some of the hospital operations or money, and it was actually booked as a receivable in 12. In 13, the city actually received that cash. So it was big swinging cash from this year to last year. Okay, and if you flip to the next page, then.
Before you leave that, can I ask you a question? Tallest column on there.
Yes.
My, my sheet here shows that it's somewhere in the 6 million range, but the number on top says 8.1 million.
Correct. I believe, I do not have an 8 million line up top. I will have to fix that.
Is it supposed to be 6 something?
It is 8 million.
It is 8 million.
It is 8 million.
It is 8 million, okay. We just scrunched the graph, okay.
Exactly. Made it easier to view.
And that supports that on the following pages.
Correct. So the next page then is the fund balances. General fund, you can see, had a slight increase, and then all other governmental funds, it's opposite of cash. The big screen.
You've been on the page.
Sorry. I'm not a very good multitasker. You can see there's a big swing from 2012 and 2011. What happened was is that money went into fund balance, it just wasn't cash that the city had at the end of the year. Okay? Just wanted to mention, within the general fund, the city has approximately five months of expenditures in unassigned fund balance. The state auditor actually recommends a minimum of five months. What happens is the city doesn't get property taxes until June. The count, the city needs to be able to make payments up until those property taxes come in, so they highly recommend that five-month minimum to be able to meet those cash flows. And as you can see, the city is maintaining right now, right at the five months. Sometimes projects aren't getting done and things like that as the levy stays the same. What I've noticed here recently is that with the economic downturn, all the cities held their levies the same, and they put off road projects and they put off all the other bigger projects. And now I'm starting to see the trend of the cities going ahead and increasing that levy to either build fund balance or do those projects that are needed. So the council might want to keep that in mind as well as you go forward, future planning and things like that. So this is, this next slide is the city's governmental revenue, so all of the funds combined, where are the revenues coming in from? If you look at that first column, property taxes, the purple line is quite significantly higher than the red line, so 2012 was higher than 13. What happened with that is payment in lieu of taxes from the hospital came in in 2012 and it was correctly recorded there. Now going forward, that money coming from the hospital is actually being recorded in charges for services, so if you go over about five lines, you can see a significant increase in the red line for this year. So it's just a reclass because of the way the city took over the hospital fund and is making those payments for the hospital. Okay, if you go all the way over to the end, the other revenue column, you can see a significant increase in that as well for 2013. 210,000 of that was hospital interest earned on the cash and the working loan that the city gave the hospital. So that's interest, it is coming into that category, along with 498,000 that the hospital pays the city to make those debt service principal and interest payments. So, so going forward, these, the property taxes, charges of services and other revenues will be consistent. This year it just takes a big swing with the way the operations were taken over. So then with that being said, these pie charts will have the same effect as the first one, the prior slide did. Property taxes now at just 23% because of the payment in lieu of charges went down to, or payment in lieu of taxes went down to charges for services. So charges for services increased percentage-wise. Okay? And we'll go a little to expenditures for all governmental funds as well. Expenditure side fluctuates as well with the hospital. Obviously, there's revenues coming in that, that expenses go out for. General government, last year, this, the city paid the state surcharge and it was recorded in general government. Now that money is actually being, the expenditures are actually being recorded in public safety. So if you go one more over, you can see that significant increase in the blue line and that's what causes that. Public works increased from last year, purchased three new trucks, approximately 200,000. Okay? Go over to the debt service line, increased there is due to the payment of the hospital And then capital outlay is still significant due to the Fourth Street project being wrapped up. There'll still be some more in 2014 as well. The next graph just gives a pie chart of percentages of the expenditures in the prior The debt service obviously increased with the hospital payments, and then public safety and general government just swapped categories for the payment for the hospital. Just briefly, a few other financial highlights. The city is required to submit reporting forms and the financial statements to the state, and those have been completed already. We discussed the hospital in detail. The capital outlay expenditures, as discussed. Gatsby 61 and 65, new accounting standards that were required to implement, were properly implemented this year. Slight change in financial statements, no changes in numbers, just reclass. Financial stability, general fund had an increase of approximately 166,000, included 67,000 of insurance proceeds and not all of that has been spent in 2013, will be spent in 2014. I just wanted to point that out. It was in revenues, but it was not all in expenditures. Okay, that was my last slide. Are there any other questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Mary? I'm just going to, just make one quick comment going back to the capital outlay, as you guys can, we all know that we've taken on some large projects and we do that every few years, and Fourth Street in here shows a significant amount of capital that we invested in that project, which as Mary and Vicki have stated in the past, that we still have some 2014 costs as well. But you can see really the significant amount of impact that makes on our financials when we take on those types of projects. And I think in the last, I would say almost 10 years, we've done, started with Sinclair Lewis Avenue, which was a very large project, moved to Ave Street, which was probably the biggest project we've done, and then we come down here to Fourth Street. So we've done some very large projects and our goal would be to do smaller projects, but more consistently rather than, you know, being on a schedule where we wait 25 years past their life expectancy and then replace them. So I think councils go forward and we go as well. Think about capital outlay. We've talked about doing one block here and one block there would make far more or less impact on our financials on any basis, obviously on the capital outlay, and be much more measurable and planable as we go forward, so we talked a little bit about that as well. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move on to our park board report.
Okay, the park board met last night, Tuesday, May 6th. That was a regular meeting. They have several items on their agenda, but only one is city council action later tonight. The first item, they will be recommending a road closure for a 5K for the American Legion, and that is your consent agenda. The other items that they have is they will be recommending approval of plans for the shelter to go out for bids, and that will be on the council's next council meeting, and this is the shelter for the multipurpose park. They will be recommending approval of an online fundraising pending legal review, and that is an online fundraising program for the, for the splash pad. They also have worked on revising the naming rights agreement. That'll be forwarded to the council as well at the next meeting, so the park board's actions will mostly come to the council next time, which is not unusual when the park board meeting is the night before. They also talked about the multipurpose park development and removing partial perimeter fencing. There'll be some possible replacement in different areas for traffic control, pedestrian control, et cetera. They did review some accrochments after seeing the property line survey, which indicated a neighboring property line, or property owner has paved his driveway and parking area over onto the multipurpose park property. They did make a recommendation that the rain garden include trees and shrubs for less maintenance, and also they are recommending the repair of the half pipe versus removal or replacement. So that's some of the things the park board's going to be working on, but as I said, they only have the one action for the council that is tonight in the consent agenda. Do you have any questions on the park board?
Any questions or additional comments?
No.
No? Thank you, Vicki. Move on to our EDA report?
The EDA met today at noon, it was their regular session as well. They had a couple items on their agenda for discussion. They did vote to provide copies of the appraisal report on the racetrack in Minnesota Sodas, both to Felling Trailers and Minnesota Sodas. They also learned that negotiations between those parties that you have ceased, and so that makes that appraisal become public knowledge. They directed staff to proceed with developing a timeline for decertification of TIF District 1-1 if the city, if the city were to retain the funds for economic development. So at their next meeting, they'll receive the exact timeline and what kind of actions will be necessary to do that. And also they discussed an existing business that wants to expand as an owner versus a leasing, and they're working to find property with a possible build-to-suit option, so there are no action items by the EDA, from the EDA tonight for the council.
Any questions? Thank you, Vicki. Okay, so that is all of our reports. We'll move on to our action items then this evening. Action item 7A, approved resolution 2014-25, accepting the 2013 audit.
I guess that's the whole report, right there.
All right. Well, is there any questions of staff in regards to the audit as presented as Mary has gone?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Dave to approve resolution 2014-25, accepting the audited financial statement report for 2013.
I'll second.
Motion by Dave and seconded by Warren. Is there any discussion? I'll call the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries for in favor, none against. Moving on, approved resolution 2014-26, approving the vacation of Elm and Fourth Street North Central Care.
This is the action following the public hearing held earlier on the request of Central Care Health Systems Stock Center to vacate a portion of Fourth Street North and Elm Street North. The resolution presented includes both actions as one resolution, however, it can be separated if the council wishes to act independently. And in addition, I wanted to note that costs associated with preparation of the deeds, et cetera, will be passed on to the applicant. I think that was a question that one of you had asked me earlier. So what the action is or the request is before you now is to approve resolution 2014-26, approving the vacation of the road right-ofway.
It's the wishes of the council to separate them or leave them together.
Leave them together.
Leave them together.
General consensus will leave the vacation request together. Is there any questions of staff? Now, is there a motion to approve resolution 2014-26, approving the vacation of road right-ofways?
To move.
Motion by Dave, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Warren. Is there any discussion? I'll call the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries for in favor, none against. Moving on, action item 7C, approve resolution 2014-27, approving the vacation of road right-ofway on tennis property.
And this action, of course, is following that public hearing. That is for the part of First Street South lying easterly of Birch Street South and that is the request of the Tennesse's. One thing, of course, is the costs will be, will, costs associated with this action to prepare and recording the quitclaim deed, of course, would be the responsibility of the applicant. And also to make sure that you understand or, or the understanding that the entire vacated roadway would go to the Tennesse's where their house currently resides. So our request is to approve resolution 2014-27, approving the vacation of the road right-ofway.
Excuse me. Any questions?
I was just wondering, how, were they paying real estate taxes based on, as if they owned the property or even though it was half ours or?
The lot size according to the county was as if they already had it, yes.
Okay.
Any questions?
No. Motion to approve resolution 2014-27.
We have a motion by Dave to approve resolution 2014-27, approving the vacation of road right-ofway. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Dave and seconded by Keith. Is there any discussion? I'll call the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries for in favor, none against. Thank you. Moving on to D, approve resolution 2014-28, approving vacation of easement Engel.
And this, as well as following the public hearing, this is the one that simply removes the original easement that was replaced by a new easement in 1989. And when you take this action, the next action on the lot split will just follow right along on the same property. But this request is to approve the vacation of the utility easement, resolution 2014-28.
Any questions of staff?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Warren to approve resolution 2014-28, approving the vacation utility easement and a second by Dave. Is there any discussion? I'll call. No discussion?
No.
I'll call the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries for in favor, none against. We're moving so fast I can't keep up with the writing everything now. All right. We are on E, approve resolution 2014-29, authorizing the minor subdivision lot split.
And again, this is the same property we just, same area. On April 23rd, the city received a request for a lot split from Eleanor Engel for property located at 1821 Sinclair Louis Avenue. The property currently is described as Lot 2 in the westerly thirty feet of Lot 1 of the Engel addition. The request is to split the west thirty feet from Lot 2 and combine it with Lot 3. The resulting Lot 2 will be 103 by 180 feet and will meet all zoning criteria for a residential lot. The resulting Lot 3 is currently, is currently developed and will be 133 by 180. The effect of the split, along with the prior split shifts, basically what it does is shifts Lot 2, actually to the east, not the west. I did provide you with a copy of the certificate of survey where you can see that thirty feet right in the middle that is going to stay with Lot 3 and you can see the shed on the back of the property there that will meet all the setbacks if we take thirty feet off of that lot. So if anybody has any questions on how that shift works, I know that the applicant is here that can answer any questions. The city code does allow for the submittal of a lot split or minor subdivision directly to the city council for approval whenever such a split meets or exceeds zoning standards, which this one does, and so it did not have to go through the planning commission. The request tonight is to approve resolution 2014-29, approving the minor subdivision for Eleanor Engel.
Again, any questions, staff? Is there a motion to approve the resolution 2014-29, approving the minor subdivision for the Eleanor Engel?
To move.
A motion by Keith and seconded by Warren. Does that work?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion? I'll call the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries for in favor, none against. Thank you. That ends all of our action items in regards to our public hearings. So moving then to our action item F, which is the approved airport layout plan authorized submittal to FAA.
Okay, this, tonight is the actual completion of our project that has been the master plan and the airport layout plan submittal. Our airport consultant has completed the airport layout plan drawings. It is the city's plan for the future of the Stock Center Municipal Airport. This plan complies with the city's recently adopted master plan. The ALP depicts in map format, map format, property boundaries, easements, safety zones, proposed future improvements and acquisitions. The FAA and Mendat Aeronautics have been in the loop and in attendance at meetings during the development of the master plan and the ALP. The ALP is the actual document that requires approval of the FAA and Mendat. Once approved, which we're thinking maybe October, the city will be able to apply for FAA grant funding for improvements according to our 20-year capital improvement plan. And you did, you did get the, the 10-page format map as part of your packet and we did provide you with some kind of bullet points of what each map page means. But really, it is page two or sheet two, which is the airport layout plan that kind of puts everything together in one thing. And it's all color-coded and it's all overlaid on top of the, of the aerial photography so you can kind of see what that all is. Our consultant is here. If you have any specific questions about any of the items on the ALP, otherwise, once you're done with any questions, we'll be asking you to approve it and we will send it on to the FAA for approval. So if you have any questions for Melissa, she's certainly happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Vicky. As Vicky stated, in our packets, we had from Melissa and her team of folks, been working on this for a very long time, this master plan, and has done an outstanding job. Couple of the highlights that was noted in your handout was obviously your title sheets, the, the sheet two, as Vicky stated, the, the plan that has all of your colors on it really shows what the future of the airport may look like in regards to potential expansion as well as what would be needed and required to meet those expansion in regards to potential acquisition, movement of the east and west runway and a number of different things within the plan. So again, this is the, the plan. There's any specific timelines that requires us to, to act or move forward in regards to a particular thing, but I would say if the city is to grow the airport, this would be the plan that you would follow throughout that process as this would be our master airport plan which is envisioned the next twenty years, right? So with that, is there any questions for Vicky or for Melissa or anybody on regards to the plan? I think it was very well done. Thank you.
Hearing none. Then, is there any more questions of staff? Is there a motion to approve the airport layout plan and authorize the middle to FAA and Mendat Aeronautics?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Dave. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Warren. Is there any discussion? Melissa, do you have any additional comments? Any comments? Hearing none and no discussion, I'll call the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries for in favor, none against. Again, thank you. Move on to G, approve resolution 2014-30, granting easement for ingress and egress utilities Arn's property. Vicky?
Okay, Steven Arn's, he's at 200 and a half Second Street South Stock Center. He owns property that is currently landlocked. His property is adjacent to city property on the east end of Second Street and is abounded by the city on the east, the city trail to the north and private property to the west and south. His family has owned this property for over fifty years and has obtained access over the city's property on the east side. He is seeking to officially obtain a 33-foot easement over the property for ingress, egress and utility purposes so he may connect to city utilities and also satisfy his lender that his property has public access. I did give you a sketch of his property. You can see that he is, he owns a half of a lot to the north and then someone else has the other half lot to the south. They have, in fact, their driveway and everything has been over that 33 feet that we are proposing to grant him an easement for, for many, many years, ever since that house was built, which is longer than they've owned it. So he's been in contact with the city for many times and I've been talking to the public utility to see if we brought utilities down that easement, if he would be able to hook up to city water and sewer, which he will. His electric goes through there and so we decided that it may be appropriate to grant him an easement so he can record that with his property so he has legal access. We're not actually selling him the property or gifting him the property. We are granting him the right for ingress, egress and utilities. And so that is presented to you in the form of resolution 2014-30.
Thank you, Vicky. I do have one comment and I had an opportunity to visit with Vicky on this, but I know there will be some minimal fees to move forward with recording of this. And any fees that would be associated with this, I would recommend to be picked up by Arn's.
I apologize, I didn't, I did talk to him about that and he does understand there'll be some document preparation fees from the city attorney and then also the recording fees at the county.
All right. Is there any other questions or comments?
That, that's basically driveway access kind of thing, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just curious, why don't we just sell it?
Why don't we just sell it to him?
Yeah. I'm just curious. It doesn't seem like we're going to be able to use it.
Well, and you know, and that's next to the property where you have the snow removal area. And he did talk about possibly purchasing it. What he'd really like to do is purchase the property in front of him and use that for utility purposes, but he hasn't been successful in doing that. And I guess when I brought it to committee maybe two years ago when we first talked about it, an easement was preferred over buying it from both him and us. I mean, if you want me to go back to him and ask if he wants to purchase it, I mean, I certainly will do that. The one thing that we have to realize is the property in front of him actually uses that same easement and so I'm sure he'll be, or that same area to get to their house because their house is only two feet off the property line. So if I sell it to this guy, then we'd have to make sure he'd grant easement to the one in front of him. So it gets complicated.
Thank you.
Good question, though.
It's a joint access road direction.
It's like a shared driveway.
Yeah. All right. With that, is there any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve resolution 2014-30, grant easement for ingress and egress and utility purposes over the west 33 feet of the north 244, 242 feet of Lot 15, auditor's subdivision as requested.
To move.
Motion by Dave, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Warren. Is there any discussion? I'll call the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries for in favor, none against. Moving on to H, approve resolution 2014-31, approving purchase of Flex mower. Vicky?
As part of our ongoing capital improvements and at the recommendation of the operations committee, quotes were obtained for the replacement of our 2002 Land Pride Flex mower. We did receive four quotes. They were all obtained from local vendors through their government purchasing program, which a lot of times can even be less than the state bid. We have Modern Farm quoted a 14-foot Land Pride, Dairy Land Supply, a 15-foot Bushog, Midwest Machinery, a 12-foot Frontier and Midwest Machinery, a 15-foot Frontier. We, I did provide you a copy of a specification comparison on the second page. We currently use a 14-foot model, a Land Pride, which is what was preferred in the quote. However, the other brands are not available in a 14-foot width, so the vendors quoted their most comparable model. Of the specifications outlined, staff has indicated the most critical are deck tire size due to the rough terrain because out at the airport, we, and in our larger areas is where we mow, so we like to have the bigger tires. The deck thickness, that is due to the effects when we're mowing in a lot of sandy areas that sand kind of becomes like a sandblaster and so it's nice to have the thicker deck. And also the blade tip speed to keep those blades spinning because we'll run into, you know, thick areas. And I do have Dave Belkey here from the Park Department. He can answer any questions that you have. And then if you have any questions on the individual specifications. We currently tow this machine with a 45 horsepower tractor and all of them have a, like a 35 or a 40 horsepower minimum to operate it. And so we are, they, we're within that with the tractor. We are, tractor horsepower is kind of at the low end of what is required, so we need to keep that in mind as we make the decision. So do you have any questions for myself or for Dave on this matter?
I have a couple of questions for Dave.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dave. A couple of boxes, we reviewed the purchase of the Flex mower. We have four quotes, everything from 12 feet to 15 feet, which 14 feet was our, was our spec. Is there a grade within these four mowers that is better qual, as far as thickness of sheet metal? This mower is going to be utilized out at the airport. We get into a lot of sand. It kind of gets, I know some very heavy usage. So my question would be is, is there specific ones in here that meet or exceed what your expectations were as far as heaviness or quality of grade?
Right. And part of that is why we are looking at replacing it because it, the old one is just worn through. I mean, the decks are wore out and, I mean, you can look at them and they, they're just polished like you would take a sandblaster after them and with the later soil we have and, you know, thinner grass, it picks up a lot of sand. So we're looking for the heaviest decks that we could get, which being the, the Land Pride and the Bushog, they're both seven gauge or three sixteenths. The Frontier is a, is one gauge lighter.
So the Frontier model is lighter gauge deck steel, basically?
Yes, it's thinner, yes.
Okay. And tell me again, how long have we had the current one?
It's 12 years old.
2002, okay.
And it don't have an hour meter on itself, but the tractor, we figure it uses, pulls that mower 85% of the hours that are on that tractor. So it's about 1,500 hours on this mower deck.
What type of warranty is that? I see there's quite a discrepancy. It's one year and five year for?
Yeah, and I think they break that down where it's, it's five year on the gearboxes and drivetrain where the Frontier is just a one year on everything. So the other parts of the mower are, are one year on both the?
So some things drop off within that five year. Okay.
And I think the other question that I have is, is there's been some discussion about the tire size. And I know the, it looks like Modern Farm has its tad bit bigger tire.
Yeah, they're, they're actually two inch, two inch on diameter, which in an inch and a half on width, you just get a better ride, a smoother cut. We're in such rough areas, you get a nicer finished cut with, you know, a bigger tire versus a smaller one.
So from the looks of it, my thoughts would be is, is we got five years versus one year. We've got heavier steel versus lighter steel. From that perspective, I would narrow it down to the top two, which is the 14-inch, 14-foot, excuse me, Land Pride and 15-foot Bushog. If you were to narrow it down to your choice as the one?
If you were to narrow it down to your choice as the one that's gonna be operating these on a regular basis, what would you recommend us to do?
I would recommend the Land Pride. Just, one of the reasons is we knew what we've had. It's been a good mower, just a good product. And our tractor is maxed already with the fourteen-foot. I'm afraid just going with another foot is, is gonna tax it that much more horsepower-wise. It's short on horsepower, as somebody told me.
Okay. All right. Is there any other questions? Dave? We do have a difference in pricing, obviously, between the fourteen-foot and the fifteen-foot, which rises me with a foot bigger from Bush Hog is six hundred and eleven dollars less.
Right. And I, and I don't think you maybe got this other figure. I went later and got a set of, the cost of the set of blades for each of the mowers. And the Land Pride came in at two hundred and fifty-seven dollars for a set where the Bush Hog was three fourteen, difference of fifty-seven dollars. And, and we go through a set at least per year on these, so it's, you know, it's fifty-seven dollars, but it's, it's that difference that will be there every year. So, there's little savings with the Land Pride versus the Bush Hog that way.
Well, what were you talking about? Cost of what?
Cost of blades.
Blades.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody have any other comments? Any questions? None? I will ask for a motion of the council. What's the wishes of the council?
I will make a motion that we accept the bid for the Land Pride.
Okay. We have a motion by Dave to approve Resolution 2014-31 approving the purchase of a Flex mower, fourteen-foot Land Pride from Modern Farm at fourteen thousand dollars as listed. Is that correct?
Yep.
Thank you, Dave. We have a motion by Dave. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Keith. Is there any discussion? I'll call the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three in favor, none against, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Action 7I, approve Resolution 2014-32, authorizing purchase of real estate for the ambulance department.
At the April sixteenth meeting, the city council directed staff to negotiate for the purchase of the former ER auto building at thirteen hundred Timber Lane Drive within certain parameters that were set in closed session. Staff was able to negotiate a price within those parameters and signed a purchase agreement contingent upon city council approval. The purchase agreement price is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We do have some information that I had provided you on the financing plan, so I don't know if we wanna kind of do those together at this time or how you want to handle that. I certainly can talk about how we propose to fund it.
If you could talk about the funding, but then we'll do two separate actions.
Okay. So the city council is favorable of going through with the purchase and finalizing that, the financing plan, and this is how we have discussed this with staff. The ambulance department, out of their current funds, would fund one hundred thousand dollars of the initial payment. The general fund would grant an interfund loan to the ambulance department, so that would offer one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The interfund loan would include interest at two percent to be repaid to the general fund in five annual payments of thirty-six thousand, oh sixty-six ninety-three. So each year, the ambulance department would, would, as if they borrowed the money from someone else, they would have a debt service, principal, and interest payment, and they would pay the general fund back for those dollars over a period of five years. And we would actually have a loan agreement that would have to be drafted in order to meet auditing standards for that. In addition to that, the directors have developed a budget for other items such as paving, carpet, painting, and other minor improvements or storage needs. And I did provide you with kind of some general items, but I do have an update to that. The items include painting, flooring, washer and dryer, shower, softener, parking lot furniture and signage. The parking lot, original estimate that they'd provided me for ten thousand square feet was a concrete estimate, which came out to be about thirty-three thousand dollars for ten thousand square feet. I did submit that to the city attorney who had a sixteen dollar to twenty-two dollar a foot estimate for asphalt, and this would be for three-inch asphalt, two one-and-a-half inch lifts. And so that would make our parking lot go down between sixteen and twenty-two thousand dollars. So, if we go with that option, you can, of course, reduce that total budget for improvements from that amount. And, and that amount was, the measurements were taken on site. They measured how far out they come out of the ambulance garage and able to make the swing and the turn. And then also, our city code actually requires commercial buildings to have a paved or concrete driveway access, and this particular property is one we've had difficulties with with sand and gravel washing onto the street. So at a minimum, I would recommend that that part be taken care of initially. But this entire budget for getting the building ready, and I know initially we talked about less funds, and then when we got in there, we thought, you know, let's get it done before move in so that it's done. And so that is why the one hundred thousand dollar ambulance upfront cost was put into the budget versus a larger amount they had initially proposed. So all of those costs for getting that building ready and updated would be borne by the ambulance department, so there would be no tax dollars or general fund dollars going to that. Directors are here. If you have any questions of them, I know that there was a suggestion, we have an open house, maybe, when it's all done. The suggestion was brought to me that maybe this year we have night to unite there, so there's some options there, so that we get it done. We have a due date or an end date to have everything done and so that the public gets an opportunity to see what a nice asset that would be. So if anybody has any questions for either me or them, it would be great. Otherwise, I do have two resolutions in front of you tonight, or one resolution and one approval, which is to approve the purchase for Lot Four, Block One Aerosmith Edition at thirteen hundred Timber Lane Drive at a price of two hundred and seventy thousand. That is the first resolution, and then the second would be the financing plan.
Thank you, Vicki. And thanks for the review of the financing, as we will take that in a second action item. And I just want everybody to know that we've spent a tremendous amount of time. We did give Vicki a criteria to, in our last meeting, to meet and make this potential acquisition to bring back to the city. She did definitely fell within that and we appreciate her efforts for getting a, what I will say, a very reasonable price for a very nice facility. And I think that'll pay dividends to the community for many years to come. So before we talk about approving the funding, I think I would ask the council to consider moving forward with the approved purchase agreement for Lot Four, Block One of Aerosmith Edition, former ER building at thirteen hundred Timber Lane Drive at a price of two hundred and seventy thousand. Will anybody entertain that motion?
I'd make that motion.
Motion by Warren. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dave. Is there any discussion? I'll call the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Forward, favor, none against. Thank you. Moving on then to Action Item 7J, approving the financing plan, as Vicki just outlined. Is there any questions in regards to the finance plans outline?
I have one generic sort of question. What kind of a margin is the ambulance generating every year?
Right now, the ambulance is generating about an eighty thousand per year margin.
Okay.
That is after the allocation for the ambulance replacement. So, take the ambulance replacement fund out of that mixture, then that is the margin.
All right. But there'll always be ambulance replacements, so it's probably gonna be eighty because there'll be another one on the road.
There'll be another one. The one thing I wanted to add that I neglected to say in there is we had discussed a payment in lieu of taxes for the tax dollars the city would no longer receive because it would be taken off the tax roll. And so I would recommend as part of the plan that whatever that amount would be in every given year, that is the amount. Currently, for two thousand and fourteen, I believe that amount is about twenty-four hundred dollars.
Twenty-four hundred?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Vicki. And I, first of all, I wanna thank the ambulance, granted we have a number of them here tonight that spent a lot of time and research and looking at the opportunities within this ER auto building. And again, I think there's gonna be a number of great opportunities once we get moved down there since we just approved purchasing. So that's great. The next thing will be to get the facility ready. And I know there's gonna be a lot of elbow work and a lot of dedication from your group to get in there, to get it fixed up and make it presentable. One of the things that I'm excited about is to have the open house, to allow the public to come down there and see this facility. It's been something that, as you guys, we've all stayed in the past, you're in a temporary location for twenty years. So, temporary got to be an awful long time, and I thank you for your patience for us to finally get something done, to purchase something. Again, there's, there's been a lot of discussion amongst the community about the location and as we all know, this is, there's only so many opportunities that present themselves and you have to be in a position, both financially and with a council that's ready to move forward when these opportunities present, and I thank the council for doing that. So with that, is there a motion to approve the interfund loan to the ambulance department from the general fund to be repaid in five annual payments at two percent interest, including a payment in lieu of taxes based on the annual tax rate?
So moved.
Motion by Keith. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Warren?
Yep.
Is there any discussion? I'll call the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Forward, favor, none against. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to K. Authorized offer for sale of Walnut Street Garage.
Okay. What we have tonight is at the council meeting on April sixteenth, you asked me to put together a synopsis of options that the council should consider of putting Walnut Street Garage up for sale. And I understand there's still some discussion of whether it would be put up for sale, but if you decide to do it, we have several options. We have an online bidding process. I did contact the state of Minnesota through MinBid, that is who we sell excess vehicles, cars, et cetera. They have a fee of one thousand dollars. However, he called me today and he said they've always done buildings, but not real estate. He wasn't quite sure. He needed to have one more approval. And I told him that any of the transfer costs would be borne by us. We're just interested in utilizing their services for the online bid process. So that, just so you know that. We looked at a live auction and we did have an auctioneer go look at the site and he had said he would do a live auction and the commission would be six percent of the sale. We looked at, could we do a sealed bid where we can have a certain date? People submit the sealed bid, we bring it to city council, we open it up, high bid wins? Or we can list it for sale with a real estate firm, which would be a six to eight percent commission, but I believe the council previously discounted that option. And I would think that the council would set a minimum bid that it would accept and it should reserve the right to accept or reject any or all bids, which is very customary. So, if the city does choose to wanna sell it, you should really select the preferred option and we should move forward with it. If you prefer to keep it or sell part of it or how you wanna do that, I think we've kind of bantered this around quite a bit over the last few years and we keep getting requests to purchase it, so we keep bringing it back.
Thank you, Vicki. One of the questions, I guess I had, had we had somebody take a look at it to give us a minimal appraisal, say to speak, so we know what a minimum bid might be considered?
We did have a real estate agent do that and she did some comparables and she was unable to really locate a good comparable and ended up giving us one from a hangar in Glenwood, but it wasn't on real estate, it was just the building. So, she did give an estimated amount of what she thought we should list it for if we were to list it. And that was around, I think it was around twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight?
I'm not saying that that's what you should reserve or be your minimum, I'm just saying that that's what she thought was appropriate to list it for.
I know there's been some questions of staff about whether or not we should keep it. It's currently being used for forfeit, forfeited vehicles, being used for, no longer being used by the street department as far as storage, I don't believe.
Except the mower to water flowers.
Except for the lawn mower. We do, we will have additional facilities, so now that our ambulance has just acquired a new building, that we'll have facilities there for forfeit, forfeiter, I have a tough time with that word, forfeiter vehicles. So we could have facilities that could take them as well if they need to be inside. So, that's one additional thing to consider as we look at the potential sale. We always have talked about selling this property when Fourth Street was near completion or completed because it was the holding area for that project. So with that, I guess we'll open up to the council for discussion about how we wanna move forward with it. Many times we've done sealed bids. Maybe this one, we've had a number of interests, could be done differently, but I'll let the council have their thoughts.
I guess, you know, if we could sell this without a problem because we can use the old ambulance garage now for any storage that we need to without a problem. I don't wanna go out to where the ambulance is going right away and start sticking stuff in the back part and taking their storage away, so I think the old ambulance garage would be the first viable place to go to. Live auction is kind of what I was leaning with mainly because if we have that many people interested in it and they show up, there's a possibility we could end up in a bidding war after, you know, and we might end up with more than just our minimum bid.
Yep.
Is kind of what I'm thinking could, might be the best interest. So...
Well, my, my, my initial thoughts was some type of an auction, whether that is the online bidding auction or a live auction. I mean, that's certainly, I think, an option. I do like the opportunity. I think because of you stated the interest, the location, the surrounding businesses and/or proximity of other businesses that are, have property there, and there's significant interest in that property, a bulk plant store, obviously, it's some concern. So I think there's a number of reasons why, giving people an opportunity to bid is better than, in my case, in this case, better than the sealed bid process.
Yeah.
So...
Is the online bidding process a transparent process? You put in bids, you can see what bids are out there?
Yes. You do. You'll see the time running down and you can bid and then the next, you know, you...
And we can set a reserve still.
You can set a reserve.
Yeah. Okay. That seems reasonable because it, you know, thirty thousand dollars, that's a, you know, a thousand dollars of three percent commission, that's six, so...
Right. Okay. Any other thoughts? Keith, any thoughts?
No, I guess I don't. I like the idea of a live auction as well, but online bidding is probably just as good.
You could, you could actually, if you wanted to do an online auction, I mean, a live auction, you could actually conduct the live auction here. You wouldn't have to be down on the site, you know, you could, you know, schedule it for a time when even the council and everybody could be in attendance. Or we can do the online one too, that doesn't matter.
But it isn't such a pitched fervor if it's not live auction.
I've done those online auctions and I'm pretty click happy.
Okay. Any other comments? None? What would be the wishes of the council?
Now, if you wanna do the online one, I recall that he's supposed to get me back from his attorney to make sure absolutely, positively that they'll do it. He said they would do it and then he's just not sure how to do the real estate transfer part of it. When I said we would take over that part, he said, okay, he's just gonna shoot me a confirmation.
So does that mean the pricing, the fee is not gonna change?
The fee is the same. That's just their maximum fee.
So, the question would be is if he's comfortable with doing a governmental building online, right? Making verification he has...
Correct.
...the ability to do so.
They do buildings to be moved. They've never done buildings with real estate attached, land attached. That's, it's new ground for them.
Okay. Well, I will make a motion that we do it through the online bidding process.
Okay. We have a motion due. We have a minimum?
Twenty-eight, I think, is, if that's what it's worth, I'm willing to go with that. No.
Okay. So we have a motion by Dave to authorize sale of real estate through the online bidding process, setting a reserve bid at twenty-eight thousand, reserve the right to accept or reject any and all bids. Is that your motion?
Yep.
Motion by Dave. Motion by Dave. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Keith. Is there any discussion?
I will only say that I think the online bidding is nice, and that it can be open for several days, and nobody will be bound to be down here at a certain time for a certain period of time. So I think it seems like we might get more bidders by saying you can stay home and you can bid over a period of five days.
And I'm not real familiar with online bidding, because I don't do much of that myself, but is there a notification process that goes out about when the bidding starts, when it ends? Who does that type of notification?
What we would do is we would actually put an ad in the paper stating that this is when the online bidding is going to be, this is the website that you go to. How this website works is you go in, you find something you want to buy, you can sit there and bid against people, or you can just put in, I'm willing to pay my maximum. And then what they do is if someone else bids, they'll put you in at another like $25, and if someone bids, they don't go right to your maximum, they just automatically bid for you up to your maximum. So you can set it without having to be there if you have it. And then also, it'll tell you, it's a countdown on how many minutes are left. So if you bid in the last five seconds, it adds a minute. And then you wait for that minute, and if no one else bids, you get it. If someone else bids, it adds another minute. So you can sit there a while if you really want something with someone else. So it does give a lot of opportunity for people to bid.
And just one other thing, that is, that was a pretty comparable building that you looked at.
I think the building itself was a nicer building, but it was on leased land and not real estate, so.
Okay, so it's a horse, yeah.
Do we need to put a day, how many days we want to make it available?
With them, it's an automatic 10-day.
Okay.
And we put in there, we put pictures, and then we give them a phone number, they can call us, they can view it, they can see it, et cetera.
Well, we are paving a way for something new we've never did online bidding here.
Oh, this brave new world.
That's right.
Yeah, we'll be on eBay in no time.
Make sure everybody has their data connection updated.
That's right.
All right. With that, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'll call the motion. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstentions? Motion carries, four in favor, none against. All right. Moving on to L, approved resolution 2014-33, authorizing sale of excess property and vehicles.
Okay, we do have vehicles and property that we are, the staff is recommending that be sold. For the Public Works Department, they have the 1988 Dodge Pickup, that's the red pickup that we're replacing with the new Dodge. The 1993 Vermeer Wood Chipper, which we replaced earlier this year, the public utility is part owner of that, and they're recommending a reserve of $4,000. The 2003 John Deere 1435 mower with sweeper, which we replaced in December with that Kubota mower and sweeper, and there's a recommended reserve of 5,000. And then the 2002 Land Pride Flex mower that you approved replacing tonight to have a reserve of 2,000. There's eight more vehicles listed on the list, and these are police forfeitures for drug and DWI forfeitures. It's a 2002 Ford Escape, a 2000 Pontiac, a 1994 Ford Explorer, a 1991 Chevrolet Cavalier, a 2000 Pontiac Bonneville, a 1998 Jeep Wagon, a 1991 Chevrolet GMT, and a 2000 Chevrolet Silverado. So there would be the eight police vehicles and the four public works properties that would be declared excess and authorized for sale. And these as well would go through the state of Minnesota MinBid Online Auction.
Any questions?
None of these vehicles could be utilized by staff.
The police forfeitures that they were looking on there, they're really not appropriate vehicles for the police department to use. If other departments want to use them, then they really have to purchase and pay the state and the county their share. So it's not so simple as just keeping them. If we keep them, they have to be used for drug and alcohol enforcement purposes.
Okay. Great question. Any other questions? Comments? None? Is there a motion to approve resolution 2014-33, declaring property as excess and authorizing the sale?
So moved.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Keith.
Sure.
Any discussion?
Your motion was with the reserves, I would assume.
With, as listed, with the reserves and everything, yep.
Okay. Any other comments? None, I'll call the motion. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstentions? Motion carries, four in favor, none against.
We're losing people.
Yep. Warren's the one though. All right. Continue on. Pretty soon our high school students are going to leave too, I just got that feeling. We're going to continue on here. Action item 7M, approved resolution 2014-34, calling hearing on proposed vacation of road right-of-way.
In 2003, the city council directed staff to take steps necessary to complete the vacation of road right-of-way at the intersection of State Street and County 186. It wasn't 185, it's 186, which is 12th Street South. This right-of-way was traded to the property owner in exchange for other right-of-way needed for the county's road improvements. At that time, the intersection was changed to a 90-degree intersection, and this is over by the Rivers Edge Dining. That vacation was never completed. It was again reviewed in 2012, at which time the city did not proceed due to questions on the residual right-of-way. There was some question as to what the city, what was city, what was county. We've since met with officials from Stearns County, and we're again presenting the request to the council. The first step is to call a public hearing. All information will be presented at that time. The county is actually purchasing that property now, and then we're just trying to get this vacation, the county, or the property owner gave up their property to the county in exchange for this, but then we never followed through on our side. So I'm recommending we call the hearing on the proposed vacation, and that'll be at an upcoming meeting.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve resolution 2014-34, calling a hearing on proposed vacation of road right-of-way?
So moved.
Motion by Warren?
Second.
Seconded by Dave. Any discussion? I'll call the motion. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstentions? Motion carries, four in favor, none against. All right. That's our action items for this evening. We have no unfinished business. And we have one new business. And Vicky, I'll take the new business, because this is the performance review for you.
About me? Well, can I do it?
Yeah. And I do have a review. The Personnel Committee did meet with Vicky, and Personnel Committee, Warren and myself. And I'll just read our recommendation here. On behalf of the Personnel Committee, you're writing this letter of recommendation in support of City Administrator Vicky Villar. Personnel Committee met with Vicky on April 29th for our annual review. We are extremely fortunate to have a city administrator with the dedication, professionalism, work ethic as Vicky has. The Personnel Committee has been fortunate to work with Vicky for the past eight years. Vicky was first hired in February of 2006. Since that time, Vicky has worked tirelessly to build relationships, reduce expenses, and create efficiencies within all city departments. Vicky has worked with many businesses over the years to expand and find creative financial opportunities that have allowed business growth and new jobs for the Sauk Center area. Although we could find countless examples of Vicky's hard work and efforts, I'll sum it up like this. In order for a city to grow, you must have dedicated staff and professional leadership that creates trust and confidence within the community and their pairs, their peers, excuse me. Vicky is a great example of a true leader. As the council is aware, Vicky was put on step three of a seven-step scale in 2007. Vicky was moved to step four in '08. She declined her step in '09, and was moved to step five in 2010, which is her current scale today. So since 2010 to today, Vicky stayed on step five. Although Vicky's unselfishness has saved the city thousands of dollars in compensation in the past four years, the Personnel Committee is recommending Vicky be moved to step seven effective today, May 7th. Respectfully submitted, Personnel Committee, Warren Stone, record. Any questions? Hearing none, I'm going to ask for an action of council to move forward with moving Vicky from step five to step seven effective today, based on the Personnel Committee's recommendation.
I'd be glad to make that recommendation.
You know, I'll be glad to second it.
We have a motion by Keith and seconded by Dave to move Vicky from step five of the seven-step scale to step seven effective today. Any discussion? Call the motion. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstentions? Motion carries, four in favor, none against. And thank you, Vicky, for your hard work and dedication.
Thank you. You know, sometimes I don't always feel that. So I appreciate it, you know? Some days I'm in front of the bus, and sometimes I'm behind the bus. Most often, I'm rolling around under the bus. So I appreciate your support. I mean, that's, that's good to hear. It's been my pleasure.
I got to tell everybody this, the only negative that Warren and I could find is Vicky just works too much. Takes her work home, takes her work on the weekends, and somebody told her that's one thing she has to quit. So we'll see if that, I don't know if that's going to happen or not, but we certainly made it, made her aware of our appreciation, so. Moving on, we go right into our consent agenda. This goes quite quick, so if you don't mind, I'll move into that. Our consent agenda this evening considers of several things, and we actually have quite a few things on it. But I'll start with our schedule of claims, for a total of unpaid claims of $135,000, 63226, and paid claims of $44,000, 64626. I'll give you guys this when we're all done, how's that sound? Copy. For a total of $180,28152. We also have attachment 10B, which is a resolution, 2014-35, accepting contributions. And I want to again thank the Men's Card Playing Group for the $212.58 to the senior center. They do that on a regular basis, and we appreciate it. We have several requests. Our first request is from Jim Winters, representing American Legion Post 67, submitted three temporary 3-2 on-sale beer license applications. The first one is a term of five days from July 30th through August 3rd for the Stearns County Fair. The term, the second one is a term of one day on September 6th for the Grill and the Chilling. And the third one is a term of one day on September 20th, 2014, for the Snowmobile Swap Meet. Also, we have a request from Jim, representing the Legion, two temporary extension outdoor liquor permit applications. One is a term of one day on August 23rd, 2014, for food, music, and a beanbag tournament in the north parking lot from noon to 10:00. And the second one is the term of one day on October 4th for a 5K run in DJ music in the north parking lot from noon to 10:00. We have another request from Jim Winters, representing the Legion, for a road closure of Park Road for the 5K run. The park board made a recommendation for the closure of the road from the intersection of Oak and Park Road to the boat landing. We have another request, a resolution 2014-36, approving an off-site gambling permit for the Sauk Center American Legion. The permit would allow a raffle for an annual rubber ducky race to be held on July 20th, 2014, at the Conservation Park. We have a request from Melanie Rary, doing business as M&amp;M Corner Bar, for a temporary extension of the premise permit for anniversary bash in parking lot on June 13th and 14th with live music. We also have an assembly permit request from Father James Stotts and Father Greg Patrick Deborah Holt for the Corpus Christi procession to be held on June 22nd, 2014, at Our Lady of Angels. 200 people are expected to attend. The procession will be from Our Lady of Angels Church down Ash Street to St. Paul's Church and back down Burke Street. We also have a gambling application for exempt permit request from the Sauk Center Lions Club for a raffle and pull tabs on July 31st to August 3rd, 2014, at Stearns County Fair. Is there any else to add to the consent?
That's it.
That's it, all right. With that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Warren, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dave?
Yep.
Is there any discussion? I'll call the motion. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carries, four in favor, none against. Takes us to our informational items this evening. We have just a few things that I want to make note of.